Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone. Since we, our first order of business tonight is to elect the chair and vice chair, and I will be the person who starts the meeting tonight and establish a quorum. So, we have all members of the Metropolitan National Board of Education here tonight together, so we recognize a quorum. And I want to ask Susan York to come up to the podium, please. Susan, where are you? There you are. And I want to introduce Susan as our Assistant Manager for Customer Services. Susan York is a veteran. She is a veteran of the United States Army. And on this occasion, the 11th anniversary of 9/11, we feel it's very fitting for a veteran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And let us remember 11 years ago and what's happened since as we do this. And let us thank our armed services veterans, but also fire department veterans and police officers and many people who not only gave their lives in the Twin Towers, but who also gave their lives in their service in trying to save as many of those people as we can. Susan, it's an honor to have you lead us in the pledge tonight. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, or good evening, whichever you prefer. I'm Chris Henson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the school district, and I also serve as the official board secretary. And typically, my duties involve proofing, editing, and signing off on the board minutes. But in the absence of a board chair or a board vice chair this evening, I've been asked to conduct the election of the board chair. And so, the way that we're going to do this is that I'll first accept nominations from the floor. And if you want to nominate someone for the board chair, please do so. Once we close nominations, we will vote. And as soon as one individual has received at least five votes, which will be a majority of the board members, then we will finish, we will conclude voting, and the new chair will be named. So at this point, I will open the floor for nominations for board chair. Ms. Shepherd?
Ms. Henson, I would like to nominate my colleague Cheryl Mays for board chair for MNPS Board of Education.
Cheryl Mays has been nominated for board chair. Are there other nominations? Going once, twice? Okay, I'll close the floor for nominations, and we'll just make it official then. All in favor of Cheryl Mays serving as board chair, please raise your right hand. And we have a unanimous vote. Congratulations. I will, at this point, turn the meeting over to Chair Lady Mays to conduct the election of the vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. I got the gavel. We will now open... We will now open the floor for nominations for vice chair, and we will follow the same rules that Mr. Henson just provided for us. We will open the floor for nominations, and once we receive all the nominations, we will close and have the vote. So we will open the floor for nominations, and let me start by nominating Anna Shepherd for vice chair. Any other nominations? Wow, we'll make it official. All in favor of Anna Shepherd being vice chair, raise your right hand. And it's a unanimous vote? Thank you. Congratulations. And it is also the responsibility of the chair to appoint a secretary. And, Mr. Henson, I would be remiss if I did not appoint you a secretary again for the Board of Education, and I would really like it if you would accept the appointment. Thank you very much. And now, we'll have awards and recognitions. Mr. Lorenzo Butler?
Roosevelt Sanders.
Roosevelt Sanders, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I have been given the privilege to introduce this evening a MNPS student from McKissick Middle School, Mr. Lorenzo Butler. Lorenzo, if you would come up, please. Lorenzo is here today with us. He is accompanied by his grandmother, his sister, who is also a student at McKissick, his principal, assistant principal, Ms. Murphy, his principal, and Mr. Churchwell, his assistant principal. But Lorenzo is a seventh grade student at McKissick Middle School. He is a member of the Goodlesville team that went undefeated in winning the U.S. Little League Championship, which led them to the Little League World Series battle against a mighty Japan team. Lorenzo's performance was one for the record books, hitting three home runs against a California team that resulted in nine RBIs in one ballgame. In addition to the record books, this middle school slugger was a trending topic on Twitter. If you Google him, you will see that ESPN, Sports Illustrated, as well as local news outlets all share the same adoration that we have for Mr. Lorenzo. Lorenzo, we are proud of your accomplishments and on the diamond, and we are honored to have you represent McKissick Middle School, Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools, Nashville, and the state of Tennessee. We expect the best from you, and we know that you will have a very, very bright future. Now, Lorenzo, we know over the past few weeks, you have a lot going on. Grandmother shared with us that she's tag teaming with mom, because since they've been back, every day, there's been a different event to honor what these young men accomplished. So, but we just want to know from you real quickly, out of everything that's going on, tell us what is the most outstanding, or most significant, or the highlight that you feel like through all of this that has happened? You want to share that with us?
Being on the news.
Man, you got to be on the news, that's for sure. Congratulations, Lorenzo.
The board will hear from those persons who have requested to appear at this board meeting. In the interest of time, speakers are requested to limit remarks to three minutes or less. Your comments will be timed. First up, Councilman James Bruce Stanley.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board of Education at this time. We'll let you know that on June, in June of this year, June 2012, the Metro Council, I'm a part of the Metro Council, we approved unanimously Resolution Number 2012-226 that allowed, that requested, the installation of a, or the construction of a new Dupont High School in Hermitage and Old Hickory. Before you, you have some factors that need to be considered. One of the things I think it's important to understand is that in 1986, the Dupont High School that existed at that time was ordered closed by federal authorities. But in 1998, 12 years later, we were released from the federal busing mandate. Administration was given back solely to local elected officials. And the population of Donaldson, Hermitage, and Old Hickory is set at 89,303. There's only one high school serving all of Donaldson, Hermitage, and Old Hickory. That's McGavick High School. I'm a 1981 graduate of McGavick High School. I understand the importance of McGavick High School and the influence it has. But I think it's important to have a supplemental high school, a neighborhood high school, in the Hermitage, Old Hickory community. Because Hermitage and Old Hickory, of that 89,000, Hermitage and Old Hickory has a population over 60,000. But it has no high school. It's been without a high school for 26 years, over a quarter of a century. I think it's important to have a 200,000 to 250,000 square foot high school to supplement McGavick High School's offerings in Donaldson. When you compare these two communities, suburban communities in Davidson County, with one another, consider Antioch, which is the fastest growing, the largest suburban community in Davidson County. It has a population of 80,047, but it's served by two high schools, Antioch and Kane Ridge. Donaldson, Hermitage, and Old Hickory has a population of 89,303, and it's only served by one high school, McGavick. I think it's important, after we were released from the federal busing mandate in 1998, we adopted the Commitment to Excellence Desegregation Plan, and with that, the School Improvement Act. I think it's important, vitally important, that a new high school located in Hermitage and Old Hickory be considered by the public school system serving Metropolitan Nashville and Davidson County to supplement the offerings at McGavick High School in Donaldson, and to be a benefit, to be a positive addition for the public school system serving all of Metro Nashville. An advisory group has volunteered and been appointed to work with the public school system and with local elected officials to gain the operation of a new high school, the construction operation of a new high school in Hermitage, Old Hickory. Once more, I think it's important to understand that in April of 2000, as chair of the Metro Council's Education Committee, I'm a licensed teacher. But in April of 2000, I appointed a McGavick Cluster Capital Lease Committee to address the things that were not addressed, that were not addressed in the school improvement plan. We came up with 14 recommendations for the public schools in the McGavick Cluster. The number one priority project was a new high school in Hermitage and Old Hickory. And there was no consideration ever given for that. But it was adopted, the McGavick Cluster Capital Lease Committee report was adopted by the Board of Education in July 2001, and also by Mayor Bill Purcell in July 2001. They felt that this is going to be a positive addition. So with that, I would appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, please ask me at this time, or get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stanley. Next up, Edward Arnold.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear. My name is Edward Arnold. I currently have two children enrolled in Metro Nashville Public Schools. My daughter attended pre-kindergarten at Fall Hamilton, and my oldest son attended pre-kindergarten at Norman Binkley. My daughter completed the third grade with the highest reading score Metro Nashville Public Schools could give for elementary school, mid-fifth grade. My oldest son completed the second grade, reading at a fourth grade level. I attribute their success to the pre-kindergarten program established by administrators and legislatures of Governor Phil Braddison and the excellent teachers at Norman Binkley Elementary School. Both children attended pre-kindergarten without fees or tuition. Metro Nashville Public Schools is currently charging fees and tuition for children attending the pre-kindergarten program, established by Tennessee Compilation of Selected Laws on Children, Youth, and Families, 2011 Edition Tennessee Code Annotated, Title 49 Education, 49-6103 to 49-6-110. This law was enacted in 2005, and Tennessee Code Annotated states it 49-6107D, fees and tuition cannot be charged. The Tennessee State Board of Education Agenda, January 30, 2009, Final Reading 4A, attempted to clarify the term "fees" and the use of income to determine eligibility. This agenda did not specifically address the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools' pre-kindergarten program, and this board is requested to clarify this agenda and address the use of the terms "optional," "fees," "tuition," and "copayment" as they apply to the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools' pre-kindergarten program. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Arnold?
My name is Michelle Arnold, and I am the mother of three children. Two of my children are currently attending Metro Nashville Public School. My daughter is in sixth grade, and my oldest son is in the third grade. Both children attended pre-k at no charge. My youngest son, Christopher, was enrolled in pre-k program at Norman Binkley Elementary School because we were told the weekly fee was $18 a week. This fee was confirmed by Norman Binkley before we enrolled him. The first day of school, my son was excited going to school with his brother. In the afternoon, we received a bell from MNPS that our weekly fee was $144 a week. We attempted to contact MNPS about the problem. The second day of school, we had to remove him because we cannot pay this fee. The second day of school, my son saw his brother wearing his uniform. He asked why he was not going. We went to school and picked up all of his stuff. This is what I feel as a mother. I am angry and disappointed, frustrated, and it is unfair to my son discriminated in a different way because we make money. I feel my son has been rejected because of his parents' income. You give him the right to get in unless the parents pay because of their income. I am jealous because other kids can learn, but he cannot. Why can't you not give us the same right? You collect this money, where does it go? You know from the beginning it is a law, you cannot charge us, but you charge us. It is already funded, but you want more. I feel angry, and how does mother tell her son? You cannot go to school because we cannot afford it. Every time he asks me why he cannot go to school, it breaks my heart. He remembers the name of his teacher, and he wants to go back, but he cannot. If I knew from the beginning it is the law, you cannot charge, I would not remove my son. What are you going to do if I didn't pay? Put me in jail, or get all we got? Show me the law that you can charge us. I want my son reinstated, either at Norman Binkley, Granbury, or Fall Hamilton. I want my son to learn like the other kids. Don't take away the opportunity of my son and the rest of the kids who are waiting. I hope my son will get in this way. Don't let him wait for nothing, and thank you.
Thank you. Jeff McCann?
Good evening, Metro Nashville School Board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Jeff McCann, and I represent the John Overton High School Band Booster Organization. We're a group of current parents highly dedicated to our children and to our school. I'm here to address the ongoing controversy over the naming of our football field for retired director, Ms. Joanne Hood. I know that you've heard from some very disgruntled alumni via Facebook and email regarding this matter, and we feel it's important that you hear some words of support for both your position and our feelings in this controversy as well. First of all, we all understand and recognize how important the legacy of Coach Nick Cutress is to the Overton community, and our students are honored to perform in a stadium bearing his name. But you also need to know how important Joanne Hood is to the Overton community, its alumni, its current students, and parents. Because of Ms. Hood, the Overton Band is known nationwide, with six state championships, three contest champions, grand championships, and regular appearances in the finals of national bands of America competitions. The reputation of the Overton Band is second to none. Ms. Hood has spent countless hours on that field and brought much pride and recognition to the John Overton High School community. During her 29-year tenure as director of the Overton Band, she has been selected president of numerous professional organizations, such as the Tennessee Music Educators Association, Middle Tennessee School Band and Orchestra Association, the Tennessee Bandmasters Association, and Phi Beta Mu National School Bandmasters Fraternity. She remains in constant demand nationwide for her judging and teaching skills. She is indeed a jewel in the crown of Metro Nashville Public Schools, a teacher to be celebrated, honored, and remembered. Like many families, my wife and I based our decision 23 years ago to reside in the Overton Cluster upon the reputation of the schools and the opportunity our children would have to be a part of the John Overton Band. As far as the controversy goes, it is regrettable that this board has had to devote valuable time revisiting a decision that was made in 2006 by prior board members and previous administrations of John Overton High. However, I urge you to consider the fact that the matter was an approved action of the MNPS Board and was presented to Ms. Hood upon her retirement. I can assure you, she was quite humbled and viewed this honor as very significant to her career. Unfortunately, it is our children that are bearing the brunt of the controversy within the school on a regular basis. But it is our desire to neither bring bad publicity to our school nor cause a rift in the relationships of various organizations and staff members within the school. As a form of compromise, Ms. Hood's supporters are willing to endorse the naming committee's original recommendation to leave the stadium named for Nick Cutress and co-name the field, the Cutress-Hood Field. And we encourage you to move forward with that endeavor and put the matter to rest. Coach Cutress and Ms. Hood enjoyed a great mutually supportive relationship, which would be further honored and recognized by the sharing of the field name.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Thank you very much.
Shell Baldwin?
Is somebody before me here? He's not here.
He's not here.
Hi, Shelley Baldwin, two kids at Sylvan Park. Let's talk about perception versus reality. Perception is that, by some, that our public schools are failing our kids. The reality is, there is a handful of schools that are struggling a whole lot and doing well, I'm sorry. There are a handful of schools that are struggling, and a whole lot that are doing well and improving, and a good chunk that are knocking it out of the park. Perception is that Great Hearts has a diverse population. They have one traditional charter school that serves those in poverty. The other 11 schools serve an average of 7% free and reduced lunch. Compared to our Magnet's, which average 28% free and reduced, and our Zone Westside Schools that average 46%, the reality is, Great Hearts is not diverse. Perception is, they have a good track record for closing the achievement gap for English-language learners and kids with disabilities. The reality is, out of 5,323 kids, there are 14 that are ELL, 14. Between Hillsborough, Hillwood, JT Moore, and West End, we have 3,360 kids. Of those, 240 are ELL. As for special ed, Great Hearts averages only 3.25%. At their largest school, Scottsdale's, 695 kids, they have seven kids in special ed, seven. Nashville's Magnet Schools average 5.7% for special ed. Our Westside Zone Schools serve four times what Great Hearts does, with their average of 13%. Perception is Great Hearts came to town, met all the requirements, and offered Nashville a good plan. The reality is, they have not spent one minute considering what a true open enrollment lottery population would look like in Nashville. It's perfectly clear when you look at their five-year faculty plan. Five schools, total population 3,082, seven special ed teachers. If you put on Metro's special ed average of 12% to those numbers, you get one special education teacher for 52 kids. Metro's highest ratio is at 1 to 20 for high school. They would apparently have 1 to 52, unless they have somehow figured out a way to dissuade special education students from applying for open enrollment. Great Hearts offers impressive plans, lays some buzzwords that make earnest parents salivate. They have balked at repeated quests to consider Nashville's charter guidelines and seemingly have not made a single attempt to modify Phoenix's plan for Nashville students. There's no need for us to give our education dollars to an organization that has shown a total disregard for Nashville. We do not need to engage in a charter plan that sets up schools like Starbucks in the posh areas of town, segregating out our kids based on performance. What we need is a long-term cohesive plan to address the needs of the whole student population with a quality education for all as its priority. I guess Great Hearts thought that Nashville was an easy mark. Seems the reality is, we are committed to improving our schools, but that means all our students, not just a select few. So please tell Great Hearts that this is Nashville, not Phoenix, and if they want to operate here, they need to go back to the drawing board and return with a plan that actually meets our guidelines and our student needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Moth?
Good evening. I am Chris Moth, the chess club coach at JT Moore Middle. A few years ago, you worked with our State Department of Education, and you boldly adopted common core standards. Nashville parents can now compare our kids' achievement to kids in Massachusetts. Congratulations to you on the resulting jump in ACT scores. Thanks for staying the tough course. But today, the state is heading in a very different direction. Two weeks ago, Governor Haslam designated Meggs Middle a reward school because of their high average scores. But Meggs only got a value-add score of three last year. Kids at Meggs are not progressing as quickly as kids at JT Moore, which scored a five. Yet, because JT Moore serves sub proficient kids in poverty, and thus we have lower average scores, the governor labels JT Moore a focus school, and he tells the world that JT Moore is failing. That's insane. Nonetheless, we parents at JT Moore are spending $20,000 of our PTO budget to help teachers learn new methods for differentiated instruction, to help all our children achieve. Are we crazy to do that? Should affluent JT Moore parents run from poverty to Great Hearts and Meggs, clogging our streets like the governor and his charter school advocates tell us to do? Why can't we be proud to have a strong neighborhood school, like our friends a mile to the south in Williamson County? When you tabled Great Hearts last month, the state huffed and puffed, and threatened to cut off your funding. But then they sneezed, because as the new law is written, the state does not specify penalties for your inaction. You have a green light to table Great Hearts again, but it is time for this board to recognize that a political problem looms when the legislature returns in January. The political problem is not Great Hearts. The political problem is the tens of thousands of affluent families who abandon our public schools. Stay strong against the hot breath of the state. Table Great Hearts again, but start to work on your political problem. Pick up the phone to the legislature. Call Beth Halteman Harwell and pull together a meeting. Ask her, why are more lotteries right for affluent families in Nashville but wrong for Williamson County? Be ready for the tough question she may ask you. Why do you insist on putting sub proficient poor kids on the bus when the school bell rings, when our charter schools show that extra tutoring and coursework can close the achievement gap? Don't answer her that your plan is to close the achievement gap with intercession. At JT Moore, the epicenter of your Great Hearts headache, you have allocated zero funds for intercession. So, table Great Hearts, call the state, and then take a few months to realign your vision with Speaker Harwell's for all of Nashville's children. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you. Ross Buer?
I'm Ross Buer. I'm here on behalf of Great Hearts. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. Obviously, I respectfully request that this board approve Great Hearts' application tonight. Realize it's a new board, and just a quick background about Great Hearts, obviously it's a nonprofit charter school. It has an academically rigorous curriculum. It has open enrollment, no admissions test, and so that's one of the ways it differs from Metro Magnet Schools. Enrollment is by a blind random lottery. It also, in terms of its diversity plan, according to your own Charter Review Committee, it has detailed plans to promote diversity and equitable access to school choice options. Transportation, obviously, has been a subject of discussion. As the amended application has shown, Great Hearts' plans provide a multi-year busing plan and MTA bus passes for children all over the county who are free and reduced lunch. And that obviously meets, and in many cases exceeds, what Metro does for its own out-of-zone kids in its open enrollment schools. It's also, of course, going to be in a very diverse area near White Bridge Road and Charlotte Pike, which is the target prime location that they're trying to put the school. So for all of these reasons, we respectfully submit that Great Hearts' application, it's met all the standards of your own Blue Ribbon, you know, gold standard charter review committee. They recommended, they found that in the report, and they recommended to the prior board approval. And so we would respectfully request that you accept their recommendation and adopt it. public school. And obviously, the money goes with the child. That's what the charter law is about. So parents get to choose, the ultimate in local control, individual parents decide. So, Great Hearts looks forward to being in Nashville, you know, if you all approve this. Looks forward to working with Metro schools, looks forward to educating students here. And so we're hopeful that you all will approve the school today. Also, would respectfully request, if there are questions from the Board or concerns, the opportunity to respond to those, because obviously, things that come up after the public comment, period, I can't, you know, know what those are going to be. And then last of all, again, look forward, hopefully, to having a chance to work on behalf of Great Hearts with you and with Metro, and respectfully request approval. Thank you for the time to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Buer. We'll move on to governance issues. Madam Vice Chair?
The consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, 81412 regular meeting. B, recommendation of contract for architectural services. Antioch Middle School renovations, Hinson Miller Quiquillo Architects, P L L C, NBO 12-008. Recommended award of contract for architectural services, Norman Binkley Elementary School addition and renovations, Street Dixon Rick Architecture, P L C, NBO E 12-100. Recommended award of contract for architectural services, Jarn Early Middle School additions, Moody Nolan, Inc., NBO 12-012. Recommended award of contract for architectural services, Jolton Middle School renovations, East Architecture, P L C, NBO E 12-018. Recommended award of contract for architectural services, Rose Park Middle renovation, KBIM Architects, Inc., NBO E 12-020. Recommended award for contract for architectural services, Stratford High School renovations, SSOE Group and the Larkin Group, NBO E 12-022. Recommended award for contract for architectural services, Keen Fogg High School Gymnasium addition, Klein Swinney Associates, NBO E 12-024. Recommended award of contract for architectural services, the Academy at Hickory Hollow, Johnson Johnson Crabtree Architects, P C, NBO E 12-027. Recommended award of construction contract for the Academy at Hickory Hollow, Southland Construction, LLC, NBO E 12-028. Change order number one for Chadwell Elementary School additions and renovations, Southland Constructors, LLC, M-479. Supplement number one for Hillwood High School library renovations, Hastings Architect Associates, LLC, L-2727. Site acquisition for 25 acres for new elementary and middle schools in the Antioch Cluster located on Smith Springs Road. P, awarding of bids and contracts. One, Rico USA, Inc. Two, Benefit Express Services. Three, Computer Power Solutions of Illinois. Four, William K. Warren, Jr. Five, Southern Word, Inc. Six, Math Tutor Educational Services, Inc. Seven, National School Boards Association, NSBA. Q, recommended approval of legal settlement claim C-29860 in the amount of $10,000. R, recommended approval of legal settlement claim number 1-15215 in the amount of $16,500. S, recommended approval of legal contract claim number 115327 in the amount of $150,000. T, recommended approval of textbook adoption, nursing education, History of Americas 1, History of Americas 2, and Theory of Knowledge. U, recommended approval of request for compulsory attendance waiver. Madam Chair, I move to approve the current agenda is read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the consent agenda is approved, is read. Next, on the agenda, consideration of State Board of Education's remand of Great Hearts Academy's charter application. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the Great Hearts charter application, which includes the amended application and the 48-page addendum letter from Great Hearts with the following contingencies: that it has a diversity plan that mirrors the MNPS diversity plan used in its schools of choice; that Great Hearts must employ licensed teachers; and three, only one school is approved in the current application cycle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chairwoman?
Mr. Pinkston?
Our attorney's in the room. While they're making their way to the podium, I have a few questions. As a brand-new Board member who has been working overtime, as I'm sure my colleagues have been, to get up to speed on this matter, I think it would be useful to take a minute and explore some of the foundational legal issues that underpin or maybe hang over this debate. For those of us who are just now joining the conversation, I would like first to hash out an operative issue in open session tonight, which is, does state law really give the State Board of Education the ability to overturn a local decision and remand it back to the local Board? I have three very specific questions that I'd like to pose, Mr. Solomon, and would like to hear your answer. The first question I have is, is the statute in question as clear as it has been depicted relative to the State Board's authority in this matter? I ask this because I've seen a few state laws in my time and that were not as clear as they could have or should have been, and so I want to know if this one is clear. The second, I also would like to know if the statute is clear, is it constitutional? Just because a law is on the books does not mean it's not suspect. I'm not an attorney, but I'm curious about how an appointed State Board can send a matter back to nine locally-elected individuals with instructions to vote a certain way, even if it's not constitutional, or even if it is constitutional, it's not, doesn't necessarily seem quite right to me. The third question I've got is, even if the first two are clear, I would like to know, do the State Board's recommendations or instructions bind over to an entirely different school Board? And in other words, the Board that's sitting here today is substantively different in its makeup and composition than the one that originally took up this issue, so does it matter that we, basically, that we've had more than 40% turnover? So those were some of the questions that were running through my mind when I was sitting in the audience on August 14th, when the Board deferred its decision to this meeting. These are the questions I think some members of the public might want to hear the answers to, and even though we're talking about Great Hearts today, I imagine it will be another school or another proposal in the not-so-distant future. So I'd just like to better understand the legal landscape that we're operating in before we proceed.
Okay. Very good, Mr. Pinkston. I'll address those sort of one at a time. The first question I believe you had was whether or not the state statute that gives the, the Tennessee state statute that gives the State School Board authority, whether it's clear or not. And, you know, lawyers get paid a lot of money to find loopholes in laws. There's no doubt about that. Nevertheless, I've been practicing law since 1982, and on the scale, from a scale of 1 to 10, how clear is this? It's got to be a 9 or a 10. It's very clearly drafted, the language is very plain, and it's very clear the State has, the State Board of Education has the ultimate say on appeal, and in fact, from that decision, there is no right to appeal, which is also very clear in the statute. And so I do think that there's very little doubt that the statute says what the statute says. You asked this question, but maybe violating the rule that lawyers always tell their witnesses, which is never to answer any questions that haven't been posed to, but I'm going to ask it, answer it anyway, because it's been on people's minds. If there's any ambiguity, it could be perceived in the order that the State Board of Education wrote their remand order back to this Board of Education. There was some discussion about whether these contingencies meant that Great, meant that Great Hearts had to, before the charter was approved, they had to meet these requirements, or is this part of the charter contract and yes, approve the charter and then put these contingencies in place? I hope that was clear. I think in the totality of the letter, the State Board of Education hearing and meeting, I think it's pretty clear that they, that the answer is, approve the charter with the contingencies in them, and if you need to audit and make determinations thereafter, so be it. So. The second issue is whether or not this is constitutional. We have a U.S. Constitution and a Tennessee Constitution. Under Tennessee, under Tennessee constitutional principles and Tennessee law, there's no doubt that the state basically, that basically gives certain powers to cities, counties, municipalities. And basically, the rule is that unless the state has ceded a certain amount of power and a certain action and a certain duty to municipality, the state basically owns that turf. And so the state really does have the final say over anything happening in Tennessee vis-à-vis what the state or what Davidson County can do in this particular case. So under Tennessee's Constitution, and this is also the law in many, many other states as well, Tennessee's not unique in that, so I do think that it is clearly constitutional under Tennessee, under Tennessee law. Under the U.S. Constitution, the only potential question is, would be whether or not the granting of this charter in somehow violates due process or equal protection because the charter school Great Hearts would not be quote-unquote diverse. This is a very, very complicated area of the law. If we want to spend some time talking about it, I did bring an expert with me. But suffice it to say that, in the opinion of the legal department of Metro, that the granting of this charter at this point in time would not violate these U.S. constitutional principles either. So I think we're safe to say that it's constitutional, whether it's the U.S. Constitution or the Tennessee Constitution. The third question you asked was whether or not the decision made by the Board, which occurred during the point in time where the Board had a different makeup than it has now, whether that remand order is binding on a newly-constituted Board. And the clear answer to that is yes. The Board is a body, it's alive, it's an organ, it's organic. The law always understands that members may change, but the Board is the Board is the Board. And as far as what is binding on this Board, you inherit anything that happened prior to the change in the guard. So I think that's very clear as well. So, there's no new look because there are new members on the Board, even though in this particular case, almost half of you have changed over. Does that answer your questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I have something I'd like to read. And I apologize for, I had to write my thoughts down. On the night of August 14th, by a majority vote, Metro Nashville Public School Board of Education did the right thing and voted to defer the decision mandated by the State Department of Education to approve the charter school application for Great Hearts. We refuse to be bullied by those at the state and local levels who think they know what's best for us in Metro Nashville Public Schools. We were soundly criticized and threatened with both legal and monetary sanctions for our actions. More bullying by the State Department of Education. As a school district, we go to great lengths to discourage bullying in our schools, yet apparently bullying is condoned at the state level. Over the weekend, we discovered that not only were the State Department of Education employees encouraging Great Hearts to appeal, they were driving the bus. Communication between State Department of Education employees revealed to us that they wanted Great Hearts' application approved, and that they would do anything in their power to achieve that goal, and that they did. Without so much as a robust discussion at the state appeal, the only minutes, only minutes into that appeal, the State Department of Education remanded Great Hearts' application back to MNPS and dictated to us that we approve it. In today's paper, we read that parents in the Arizona Great Heart Schools are expected to make a yearly $1,200 contribution. How can we expect parents to make this type of contribution in a school district that has more than 70% financially, economically disadvantaged students? The bottom line is, and I've said this before, what is best for all the students in Metro Nashville Public Schools? If a charter school is underserving its students, the only option is to close them, disrupting the lives of children and their parents, and this is tragic, because one year in the life of, in the educational life of a student is an eternity. It is clear to me that money, that many with the State Board of Education have an agenda that trends towards having multiple charter schools, private schools, if you will, with the majority of their funding coming from the local school boards or their funding sources. If we allow this to happen, what do you think will happen to all the great schools we have now here in Metro Nashville Public Schools? I know what will happen. They will cease to exist.
Any further discussion?
I have a statement as well. Chris Barbic, who works with the Achievement School District, made this statement on a program that's currently playing on Channel 10 called Charter Schools 101. The state of Arizona has 500 charter schools, and a lot of them are not good.
Ms. Sperring, would you speak into your mic, please?
Yes. The state of Arizona has 500 charter schools, and a lot of them are not good. The fact that charters have been historically hard to get approved have actually been a good thing because it weeds out those that shouldn't be in the game. We need to get the right people doing this work for the right reasons. As a public school Board of Education, we have the responsibility to, to those who elected us to do the right thing, to ensure that all populations of students have access to Great Hearts and to all of our charter schools. We know that economically disadvantaged children can achieve at the very same rate as more affluent students if given the same access and with equal opportunities. Personally, I have taught gifted ed, and I've also taught in schools with very high poverty. And I will tell you, it's much easier to show gains and demonstrate accountability with students that have come from affluent homes with good parent participation. It scares me to set a precedence for opening schools that cater to the affluent without specificity on how they will ensure access for all populations.
Any further discussion?
I have a comment. We, as a new Board, have inherited this problem. We have come into our seats, as has been mentioned, under threat of lawsuit, the withholding of school funding if we don't approve Great Hearts tonight. There has been talk of us being sued collectively and possibly individually, and I don't want all of this talk of litigation and potential personal liability to cloud our collective decision-making tonight or at any other time in the future. We have to stay focused on the issues and what is best for our children. So here's the issue tonight as I see it. The State Board of Education has issued this Board a mandate. The mandate instructs us to approve the Great Hearts application, quote, contingent upon, end quote, three requirements. Two of those requirements are not at issue because they're subject to state law, and so that leaves us with only one contingency for consideration, and that's whether Great Hearts has presented a sufficient plan for diversity. Now, the statute is clear that the state can issue a mandate, but with all due respect to Mr. Solomon, the state law, I mean, the state law is unclear with regard to the facts of this case. The statute that allows the Board to issue the mandate does not provide four contingencies. Nevertheless, the state has imposed contingencies on the opening of this school. They've put conditions on the approval of Great Hearts, and therefore, we as a Board should be allowed to consider those contingencies and ensure that they are met. It's important that we are thoughtful and deliberate about this process. By placing the diversity contingent on the opening of Great Hearts, the state has indicated that it shares the same concerns that have been voiced by the previous members of this Board about the importance of a diverse population in each of our schools. And so, as Gary Nixon himself has said, quote, "Metro has in its mission to have diverse schools." And so following that, I'm sure they'll want to be sure that any charter that opens, whether it be open enrollment or another choice school, would be diverse like the other schools. So on August 14th of the last meeting, this Board was rightly concerned about a plan for diversity because that is what the state has ordered us in writing to consider. Now, we as a new Board tonight have been told that we have no choice but to approve Great Hearts with no real consideration of these contingencies, that we can't wait, we have to rush forward and just push this down the pipeline. And I can tell you that that makes me very uncomfortable as a parent, as a lawyer, and as a reasonable-thinking person. I was elected by people who but agree- I was elected by people who put a great deal of faith and trust in me, and I am not comfortable with glossing over this problem. Make no mistake, we are setting a precedent here tonight about what we will accept in our system and what we expect from our schools that will be far-reaching and that will impact many children, including my own. I believe that the people behind Great Hearts are well-aware of this, or they would not have invested so much time and energy and money to get Great Hearts here. After Great Hearts is approved, it will be open for 10 years absent some extreme circumstance. So, we as a new board have to get this right, not only for Great Hearts, but for all the other schools that will be asked to approve in the future. Diversity, the issue that has been raised by the State Board of Education, is a key part of the MNPS vision, and there's a good reason for that. The number-one predictor of academic achievement is the socioeconomic status of the student's family, and the second-most important predictor is the socioeconomic makeup of the school that the child attends. What my predecessors on this board were concerned about and what I am concerned about are not only the children like mine who lottery into a school like Great Hearts or a magnet school, but those children who might get left behind, and those are always the disadvantaged children, the children whose parents don't know how to broker the system. That is a serious and legitimate concern. We, as a board, must act as guardians of those children. Public education should be committed first to the protection of students who would remain disenfranchised but for our advocacy. So, to me, this is not only a legal issue, but also a moral issue, and any action that we take tonight and any other time should serve to lift up these disadvantaged children. The danger here is that allowing schools serving primarily affluent children to operate in primarily affluent areas will potentially pull from schools like the one that my children attend, Gower Elementary, leaving behind only the poorest of the poor. And this is a recipe for disaster because then we have set up our city for more failing schools and more failing students. We need to address this question of diversity and what we expect moving forward to avoid that outcome. Intentionally or unintentionally, Great Hearts does not have a track record of creating diverse student bodies in their schools. In Arizona, Great Hearts has 12 schools, and they have less than 1% English-language learner students. That's a shockingly low percentage for a border state. In Arizona, Great Hearts averages 7% free and reduced lunch students for 11 of their 12 schools, excluding Telios, which is their one school that serves predominantly free and reduced lunch students. So, let's contrast that to MNPS, the percentages in MNPS schools. In their most recent letter, Great Hearts has identified several MNPS choice schools for comparison with regard to transportation, and these are alternative and magnet schools. They average 37% free and reduced lunch students. I also looked at four middle and high schools in West Nashville with zone priority and open enrollment through the lottery, and they average 46% free and reduced lunch students. So, basically, we're comparing seven percent, low-income children in all but one of Great Hearts Arizona schools with somewhere around 40% in the MNPS schools that I sampled. And so, obviously, based on these numbers, Great Hearts' track record doesn't demonstrate that they will mirror the diversity in our existing schools. Another issue is transportation. I know that Great Hearts is not required by law to, by state law to provide transportation, but every other charter school in this city does. And so, Great Hearts has now begrudgingly agreed to provide limited transportation for two years. My question is, what's going to happen to those children after the two years is over? I also think that the location of this school is going to figure heavily into the diversity of the student body, particularly when no long-term transportation is offered. The area Great Hearts has picked for its first location encompasses not only the White Bridge Road area, but also West End Avenue extending from Vanderbilt to Belmead. So, the question to me is, how does Great Hearts truly plan to create diverse schools here? What structures is Great Hearts willing to put into place to avoid the percentage numbers like those I've just mentioned? We have some MNPS documents that have helped us define diversity in our schools, but right now, this is a new school, this is a new ballgame because this is the first school that we have seen that is coming into our system with a history of serving more affluent children under our new law. And we don't apparently have one document that summarizes diversity, especially with regard to these charter schools that are now coming into our system. So, I would suggest that we put together a committee that will review diversity and that will be made up not only of board members, but also community members to help study diversity in our schools and create a plan for how it should be insured, in this case, and all other, in all other cases moving forward. And finally, I would just like to say that instead of lapsing into litigation, I hope that we can rise above this and find a way to come together as a community to have meaningful and thoughtful discussions about our schools because if we can't, we are opening up our city to all kinds of bad agendas and outside interests, and I for one am not willing to allow that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hayes?
Thank you. You know, to some degree, I believe that some of my comments may be useful for some of our newer board members. We have historically opened charter schools with conditions within the charter. Drexel Prep is one. I see charters as contractors, they're vendors that we can sign a contract with that we can revoke at any time. We have a, I guess before us, a charter agreement with a proven operator who has had tremendous results in another state. I'm excited, frankly, about the prospect of a contract, a revocable contract that we can execute with a vendor. Frankly, I'd be one to lead the charge against someone who violated the intent or spirit of the contract, particularly around diversity. I believe it's incredibly important not just to encourage a diverse student body, and it could be through transportation, it could be through hookups, it could be for other ways. You know, I fundamentally believe that we also have to make sure that any school that opens has a safe path of travel for students to get to school. You know, I've talked about this with some of you, you know, in the past, you've, you see it in certain high schools where kids will do anything to get out of that high school and go to a different school of choice. They will walk through a rough neighborhood at four in the morning, they'll go through a project, they'll go through a gang zone to get on the bus to go to the downtown station to connect to go somewhere else. I think that's something that we certainly would have to weigh in any school. You know, my colleague talked about a 10-year agreement. It is, but again, it's revocable. This board last year had a couple of schools that were incredibly low performers where students attend that, those schools. If they went to their, they could attend pretty much any other school and have better results. I hope that we have the courage to realize that they're vendors and that we need to really study hard whether or not they should continue to be vendors. In the same way, if Great Hearts is open and they don't attract through their own efforts, which are very, which are mandated frankly by our charter agreement to be, to mirror our diversity, to mirror our plan, if they don't do that, it is imperative upon us, if it is passed, to revoke the charter, and I for one will lead that charge if I'm, if I'm still here when it happens. You know, Ms. Froge, I want to make sure I pronounce it correctly. You know, talked about the school opening in affluent areas, and I think this is also important for the new board members who may not have had time to read the couple thousand pages of charter applications that we got, or even the few hundred pages that we got with Great Hearts. In their amended application, they specified eight locations, or maybe it was ten. I can't recall. I don't have the document in front of me. School one at White Bridge Road and Charlotte Avenue in that general vicinity. If you look at the demographics, you talked about a driving survey and looking around the neighborhood in one of our prior board meetings. When I actually pulled a demographic survey and looked at the residential housing patterns and who lives in the, in the neighborhood, it's both racially and socio-economically diverse by our own definitions. We talked about who the school might hit or two. You also spoke about the Great Heart School in schools in Arizona. We had a board retreat in March that talked about charters, and we talked about diversity. And I, and I would be delighted, excited to participate in a committee that explores diversity. I certainly would like to be a better student in federal and state law around diversity and diversity requirements. Everything that I've read about it shows that it, it leads to significantly increased gains in student achievement. I believe in it. I know that my, my constituents have, have clamored for it in, in our zone schools. But when we actually look at the eight of the 12 schools, and this is somewhat confusing to me, we had a slide, Slide six in our PowerPoint presentation for Mr. Coverstone, defined, gave a definition of diversity. And by that slide that we all reviewed during this diversity and charter school presentation, eight of their 12 schools, maybe nine of the 12 schools meet our own definition of being diverse. Now, they meet it by one or two or three percent, maybe five percent. There's one, one school that really, we would say, there's no, there's not a plurality. But it's, it's hard to make a blanket statement, and with the first school, you're right. If the, if the additional schools, and those are not before us today, if the additional schools were to open in the location that they proposed in their supplication or replication application, open in those areas, those are not wealthy neighborhoods. It's Antioch. It's a school in East Nashville close to Stratford. It's, it's schools throughout the county in racially and socio-economically diverse neighborhoods. Now, they could try to change it. If they get one school, if this board happens to approve a charter this evening, they could come back to us and apply for later schools in the future that would be in locations that are different because the replication application's not before us this evening. So, I, you know, I certainly, you know, we are a state chartered, my understanding is that we're a state chartered entity. We serve at the pleasure of the state. Our funds flow through the state and federal government to us. I have real concern if we did not pass this, this evening. I certainly appreciate our, our legal director's advice. I'd be delighted to hear our employees' advice, Dr. Register, and hear his opinion. We have historically heard from him. In our last board meeting, our former chairman said that he was not allowed to talk to us because public participation is over. If other folks on this board would like to hear, we can call for a suspension of the rules, and we can ask him to hear from us. I don't know if that's appealing to anybody or not. I'm not going to make the movement, but the motion, but we have that opportunity tonight. So, I, I certainly share the diversity concern that, that my fellow board members have. As I said earlier, if they don't meet it, I'd be the first to pursue them if I'm still on this board for not meeting our goals and expectations. I have real concern, as I said, about, about the state, the state process, and that we are opening ourselves up to litigation or further court battles that are also really expensive. So, that, those are my initial comments this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Sorry, one, one last comment.
Madam Chair, I've got a few additional thoughts, and I'd really like to ask for your and the other board members' indulgence on, on this. I think Great Hearts is actually symptomatic of a bigger issue that's in front of the school system, and I'm going to try not to be too long-winded, but I'm basically wondering if now is any time, we're in an opportunity to reset the conversation. First, you know, on a matter, a point of personal privilege, if I could, I'd like to start by acknowledging the long service of a former member of this board, Ed Kendall. People may not think of it this way, but I am technically Mr. Kendall's successor on this board. I was elected to District Seven, which was an open seat, which he held for 27 years, making him the longest-serving member in the history of the elected school board. And whether you agreed or disagree with Mr. Kendall on any given day, what was never in dispute was his commitment to public education and to promoting equal opportunity, which I think is really at the heart of what we're discussing tonight. So, I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge him and thank him for his contribution to this, to this school system. I want to quickly make clear my own view on charter schools. Like a lot of the other new members of the board, we spent all summer stating and restating what we think about these, and I just real briefly have a sincere belief the charters are useful tools in education reform. They help underserved families, and when done well, they are labs for innovation. But all that said, I don't think they are the solution to improving the system. It's important to remember that we have existing schools that deserve our attention and teachers who need our support. I happen to be a proud product of one of those schools in Nashville. So, my default position is I would really, as a board, as we go forward in other conversations, look for scalable, sustainable improvement that reaches every school, every student, every teacher as fast as possible. Standards reform is an example. If this board, which in my opinion oversees the most important urban school system in America, can somehow find a way to talk as much, spend as much time talking about academic standards as we have been talking about Great Hearts, then I think we've done a real service to the kids and the entire community. Specifically on Great Hearts, I'll be really frank. I think they botched their entry into this market. In my estimation, it seems like they came into Nashville with very little, if any, understanding of our community, our history, especially our efforts to ensure diversity. From the beginning, they thumbed their nose at the state mandate to hire licensed teachers. Apparently for business reasons, Great Hearts insisted on having five schools at once versus the standard of one school at a time. And, and what I, Vice Chair Shepherd used the word bullying earlier. I think the tone of bullying was really coming mainly from, from, from the operator here, the public displays of entitlement that I've never quite seen before. Looking at charter review team notes from June 19th, 2012, where, where the representatives who were there at that time were described as, their tone and content was dismissive of the charter review team. And that raised a question in the review team's mind of how collaborative this partner would be. So, so just a word of advice to Great Hearts here, I would seriously recommend a change in tone and tenor and cooling the rhetoric, and I would encourage the other side to do the same. All that said, I think we have left, MNPS has left itself exposed in this situation. To, to use a football analogy, we have left our blind side open, and the blind side in this case, in my opinion, is our lack of ability to succinctly articulate diversity guidelines for charter schools. As it turns out, our policies for promoting diversity in schools of choice do not exist in a single memo or a filing cabinet somewhere, but rather, they, they live across a range of procedures, zoning plans, and other documents. From talking around this issue over the past couple of weeks, what has become clear to me is I think it's time for us to develop, as, as Ms. Froge suggested, in a single document, a rational and coherent set of guidelines to promote diversity in charter schools going forward. And then we need to clearly communicate that to Great Hearts and other operators prior to them bringing any more applications to us. And, and I actually think that opens up a much bigger opportunity. I want to be clear, I don't blame anybody at Bransford Avenue for this. We are helping the state and the country figure these things out right now, and that's a good thing because we're helping lead the, the national conversation. It's one of the reasons I'm so excited, Madam Chair, about being on this board. But I think if we have the ability to somehow work together to, to lead a conversation in public education improvement, I think it's, I think we can do that. But we've got to get past the us versus them thing. I think Great Hearts has been working overtime to paint this situation as one in which the local school board is somehow at fundamental odds with the state, and I really don't think that's the case. I think the reality is the state, or more specifically, the State Board of Education actually agreed with the local school board on some key issues, and I think that's an important point. I want to say it again, the state board agreed with the local board. The state board said, no, Great Hearts, you cannot hire unlicensed teachers. The state board said, no, Great Hearts, you cannot have one, more than one school at a time. And the state board is the one that said, Great Hearts, you have to adhere to Nashville's policies for diversity, not Arizona's policies. So, the bottom line is I really don't think we're that far apart in the final analysis, but, but we'll see. So, where does that leave us? I think, as professional educators put it, I think we may have a teachable moment on our hands here. We learned a lot from this sparring match over the summer. I think now might be the time to just rethink entirely how we interact with the charter movement. Whether we like it or not, Nashville is a destination for charter schools. Let's begin to think about how we own that position, take advantage of what high-quality charter operators have to offer, and then clearly communicate to the charter movement what we expect from it going forward in the future, not vice versa. And, and conceptually, I think that probably begins with better articulating, I know I'm running along here, but conceptually, I think that probably begins with better articulating a coherent set of diversity guidelines. And doing so, I think I'd love for us to gather up the very best thinkers on this issue nationally and locally and talk about the best approach. But I don't think we stop at diversity, frankly. We need to better articulate where we think the highest needs exist in Davidson County academically, geographically. We need to be pressing charter operators and their national nonprofit and philanthropic partners to bring adequate facilities plans, and I'm sure there are plenty of other areas for us to explore. In short, I just think we- In short, I just think we need a vision for where MNPS sees itself in relation to the charter movement. I think we need to be defining how they feed into our strategy, not the other way around. And finally, I would add, just in the interest of putting to rest the bickering that's been out there, I think we need an inclusive conversation that engages the whole community. Parents like Chris Moth and his colleagues, teachers, students, we need to develop a vision, if it's possible, with our mayor and the Metro Council. They are partners in this. And as a practical matter, we can't ignore the state. They fund 35% of what we do, and as we heard from my attorney earlier, they have a little, they have more than a little leverage in statute. The bottom line is I think this has become a distraction. It's a distraction from the real conversation that ought to be happening, which is how do we develop a strategy and vision for the future? It's a distraction from pursuing the kind of scalable strategies that are going to yield the greatest returns for student achievement for the highest number of kids, which is the ultimate goal. Based on what I've learned about our application process in the very short time I've been a board member, and based on the answers to these foundational legal questions that I posed earlier, I don't see any other path, legal path, I should say, for but approving it tonight. So, I'm inclined to go yes, but reluctantly. But Madam Chairwoman, I would like at the earliest opportunity for us to advance the concept of how we can get ahead of this kind of situation in the future. I'm sorry for the time. Thank you, though.
Thank you. The questions have been called. Ms. Shepherd, if you wouldn't mind repeating the motion, please.
Do you need a second? Do you need a second to close debate?
Yes.
I'm not the parliamentarian.
Yet.
So, if there hasn't been a second, I wanted to continue the discussion.
Do we have a second on the table for closing the discussion? We do not, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate your comments. And I'm wondering, you know, we have very little opportunity to talk amongst ourselves in a non-public forum, and so we're relegated to discussions here. And I'm wondering, Mr. Pinkson, if you've given much discussion, or I guess had much discussion in your previous jobs, or much thought to how the notion of the diversity discussion really would apply to existing operators? You know, we have a significant, and it concerns me frankly, we have a significant number of charter schools that open under the previous law, that are not terribly diverse, and we've seen, I've seen some data from KIP, I've seen some data from LEED Academy that started out as 99 or 100% African-American, mostly impoverished kids that were able to go there under the prior law. And one of the slides, another slide that we had during this charter retreat that talked about diversity, showed that schools are magnets, magnet schools and high-achieving schools are a federally accepted way to achieve diversity. And the arrow essentially said that you locate this school in the middle of an impoverished zone, and over time, as academic achievement improves, a more diverse population is willing to attend the school. And the slide also said that a charter school is a similar tool. And so, one of the discussions that I've heard before, for example, this school could open in, you know, all poor, all wealthy, whatever neighborhood you want to call from a diversity standpoint, and that over time, a more diverse student body would attend as if and as academic achievement is accomplished. So, I'm just wondering if you've given any thought to our existing operators and whether or not you think that diversity should trickle down? And the second part to that is as the schools become more diverse, there's a more diverse population, how do we look at the achievement gap? If these charters and our schools in particular, and this is a bigger issue for our board, we've always talked about closing the achievement gap. If we're successful in differentiating our teaching and teaching and pushing all students at their highest level, does the gap remain? Is our goal really to teach to the middle and close the achievement gap, or to push every student to proficiency?
Mr. Hayes, let me interrupt by saying that right now, what we need to concentrate on is the Great Hearts issue. If we want to get into a discussion about diversity and closing the achievement gap, we might want to say that to another time. So, right now, we are discussing the Great Hearts issue.
Okay, I will repeat the motion for point of clarity. The motion said, I move to approve the Great Hearts charter application, which includes the amended application and the 48-page addendum letter from Great Hearts with the following three contingencies: that it have a diversity plan that mirrors the MNPS diversity plan used in its schools of choice, that Great Hearts must employ licensed teachers, and that only one school is approved in the current application cycle.
We have a motion and a second. We are going to call for the vote. All in favor of the motion as read by Ms. Shepherd, say aye.
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 Raise your hands, please. Hand votes. Three, four. All opposed? Five, I'm sorry. Ms. Spring, I didn't get your vote.
Yeah.
Are you?
I had voted yes.
Four, okay. So, we have four, 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 and five against. So, the motion does not pass.
Was your hand, when was your hand?
My hand is up.
For the against?
Opposed.
Okay. You did this on the yes with your.
Let me repeat. Four in favor, five opposed. The motion does not pass. Next up, the director's report. Dr. Register?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, members of the audience, I have prepared a rather brief start-of-schools report. I've got a couple of presentations to make as a part of this, but it shouldn't take too long because we've been in school now for a while. And I would like to say that we have had a very good start of school. We feel very good about where we are now, and I'll give you some data, and then I'll ask for a couple of reports from staff. Last year's enrollment was 79,217. Our projected enrollment for the beginning of school this year was 80,939. We actually ended up with 81,033 students, or about 100 students over projection. I want to compliment Chris Webber and his staff for making very accurate projections in our student enrollment this year. We have a total of 634 new certified staff. 533 of those are teachers, classroom teachers, plus 81 non-classroom positions, counselors, librarians, assistant principals, et cetera. 193 of the new hires were from our, for lack of a better term, talent pipelines. The New Teacher Project, 59 teachers, pardon me, Teach for America, 81 teachers, and then early agreements processed to sign the best teachers we could get very early in the process, 53 positions from those. We have currently, out of our total teaching staff, five full-time vacancies. Mathematics has challenged this year because now there's an additional math requirement for high school students, and everybody in the state's been looking for math teachers. We have four math teachers, I believe, and one CTE, Career and Technical Education Health Services position, a nurse, and that's also a really hard-to-staff position for us. This year, we have a total of 441 new support staff of those. We have 88 new bus drivers and a number of positions with information, technologies, school office support, food service, and paraprofessionals. And let me clarify, those aren't new positions or added positions necessarily. They are new positions to our staff, though, new people coming in. One update that I got this afternoon, if the board will remember, some discussion previously, we did have to lay off a number of special education assistants because of the end of the federal jobs money, and I think that number was some, a few over 135 positions. Our HR department's done a really nice job of helping those people find other employment in the school system. I want to commend Mr. Ott and others on the staff there. We've actually placed all but four of those people in other jobs that are suited for them and that they're suited to in the school district. So, that's very good work. That wasn't done by the beginning of the year, but as we continued to fill those support staff positions, we have placed almost all of them. We have a total of 494 bus routes in our school system, 310 of those, and that's the reason the streets are more crowded when school starts, among other things. But 494 bus routes, we have a total of 496 drivers plus 30 substitutes. So, we're really tightly staffed, 310 general routes and 184 special routes. We have, in addition to the drivers, we have a total of 220 monitors. So, and we're actually short 13 monitors at this time, but we're getting very close on that. I want to ask Meredith Libby to come up and to make a presentation on our communications efforts this year and some statistics, and Olivia Brown, Olivia, to present some of the data that we have in terms of communications with parents as school has started.
Thank you, Dr. Register. We didn't quite hit your standard of five slides, but we will be quick. Just moving on. A reminder of what our vision is, we want to provide clear and accurate information about our school districts throughout the community. One of the main metrics that we track is media reports. Traditionally, we have given a report after the start of schools on this, how the start of schools experience went. This year, we had almost 160 stories in July and August, on track with our normal volume of more than 1,000 media inquiries per year. We do make a judgment call about whether those are positive, negative, or neutral stories. We recognize it is a judgment call, but we'll note that we haven't changed our judgment over time. So, trends are at least consistent from year to year. We had about 47%, 47% positive stories this year, 45% neutral or factual, and you can see the remainder there is negative stories. And as I said, from year to year over time, we are increasing the neutral. Positive is staying within the range, and the negative is declining somewhat. And I will give you an example of a negative, if you wish.
So, one example of a negative story that we were really involved with this year was the March story down by the Atlanta Journal-Constitution that was kind of an inflammatory report, an investigation that they did where they were alleging that large school systems, including our own, were using kind of inflated test data. And so, we were able to look at their research and identify with our own experts as well as external experts flaws in their methodology and really acknowledging that they did not understand Tennessee data and the specifics of the school districts in their reports. And so, as a result of our efforts, we were able to issue in advance of their report our concerns, along with the proof that we had of the data errors and our issues with their report, and really became, the story became more of a non-issue. Our concerns were national before the report was even out and really made it a non-story. So, that is one of the areas where we feel like we successfully, you know, shared our district message. We also continue with our social media efforts. We began this in the spring of 2010, and this slide here shows some of the growth in our Facebook and Twitter followers over the years. You'll see there is steady growth. We always attribute inclement weather to spikes in growth, and we only had one snow day last year. So, you know, maybe a little inclement weather will bring it up. But one thing, one thing I will mention that we think is great with our Facebook account, with our friends, our fans, we actually have a potential outreach of 2 million. And so, these are people who are within the network who can potentially see our story. So, we think that's a really great number to have available. We also continue to do our live blogs. We have done 89 events this past year. Some of the events that we live blog, live blog include the Board of Education meetings. Our colleague, Matia Powell, is live blogging this meeting tonight. We do our Directors' Parents Advisory Council meetings and other special events, and you can see we had more than 12,000 viewers, readers of our live blogs. We also began in May our own blog called Own Public Education. We've had 32 posts to this blog, and really, we use that for issues related to education, to metro schools, to policy and advocacy information. Another activity we're doing this year is we are piloting a program for improving our school website content and accuracy. We know from our own experience and from research, from surveys done locally by Stanford Children, that our families, not only our families of currently enrolled students, but potential families, look to our school websites as sources of information about our district. And so, we want to make sure that the information is current and accurate and up to date as we possibly can make it. So, with this pilot program, we have received some funding to pay small stipends to persons at each individual school who are managing their websites. We have all of our schools now with a website manager. They have all been trained, they have all been given guidelines, and we are, we've done an initial evaluation before they started, and we will be evaluating during the year to see what progress we're making. And we're already seeing some really great improvements in the website content for all of our school sites. Many of you may have already know this. In February, we redesigned and relaunched our employee site on the Internet. We know our employees really need the information to be ambassadors and to be prepared in their positions. So, this new website is very attractive. It's easy to navigate, and it gives them a lot of information. It's called MYMPS, and it's been very successful.
Another initiative this board has heard about in the past is our customer care training. This is to improve the service quality here at Central Office as well as in our schools. This year, we trained about 800 employees. Seven of 10 of those attendees rated the training as excellent. The highlights of the training for our attendees were the focus on creating positive relationships with our customers and on handling upset customers. The Customer Service Center is also within our purview. That is, for those of you who are new to the organization, we do have a call center as well as our Customer Service Center staff is in the lobby out here and works with visitors to our central office. So, among the metrics that we track for our Customer Service Center is how many calls we answer without the caller being put on hold. You can see from the start of schools last year to the start of schools this year, we increased by about 5,000 calls. The calls abandoned, that is a measure of people who hung up before they actually had their call answered, plummeted. It is down to less than 10%. And I will recall that the year before last, we were at about 20%. So, that's a significant improvement. We had nearly 23,000 calls in the months of July and August that were answered within 30 seconds, which is about 75% of our calls. And just to put it in perspective, our total calls this year has declined from last year. That's actually a good thing, and we believe it to be a reflection of the fact that more folks got their call answered the first time they called, so they didn't have to call back, and that almost 21,000 or 61% were not put on hold. Trust me, if you were in the call center industry, you would be endlessly excited and fascinated by these, as I am. Looking ahead to this year in terms of our communications training, we'll continue to do the website training that we discussed earlier. We have had for a couple of years, media, we call it Media 101 Training. It's available to principals, to assistant principals, coaches, administrators, anybody who might have an opportunity to talk to the media. We have started new We have started new this summer, a training on telling your school story. You can see a quote there from one of our early attendees, and it's really for anybody in the school who wants to learn how to put their best foot forward. And then, of course, we will continue with our customer care training. In addition, for internal communications, one of the products we launched this past year was our Support Staff Memo. That is printed monthly, it will continue to be printed monthly, we think it's a good product. It is really designed for people who don't have jobs, for example, a bus driver, somebody who works in a school cafeteria, who is not sitting at a computer and able to get information the way a lot of our other employees do. So we'll continue that. External communications, we are going to emphasize, as I said, telling the stories about our schools and helping families learn about their school options. And toward that end, on Thursday, October 18th, in Mrs. Shepherd's Home High School, McGavick High School, the largest in the state of Tennessee, we will have our inaugural First Choice School Fair, and we have, as of yesterday afternoon, 119 of our schools have made plans to be at this event and share information, meet with parents, and explain the programs available in their schools. And we are fortunate, we've been able to get some money from some public school supporters who are providing us some, the opportunity to do some real live advertising and promotion of this event, so we'll get the word out about that. We have lined up our interpreters for the occasion, and we're getting the word out through our family involvement specialists to communities where English is not the first language. So we expect a very good turnout and a very positive event. And this event is scheduled in mid-October in anticipation of our annual school choice process, our fall application that will happen in the month of November. So that is our, I hope, brief overview, and we'll take any questions if you have any, or else look forward to seeing you at another board meeting.
Dr. Gentry.
I do have a question, and I've asked this quite some time before, and I'm not quite sure if we closed the loop on it. It's really about print media from our schools. You know, going into schools and I pick up pieces of literature, and they're either outdated, they're very, you know, all over the place with regards to format and layout. And I don't know if Dr. Register and I had the conversation, I was just wondering, do we have some way to leverage, you know, I mentioned a vendor, a media works that I'm familiar with, where we can provide templates that we put on some SharePoint drive that schools can then download and customize?
We actually have a Communications Resources section on our Internet. We have developed publication guidelines, they have been sent to schools, but they are also on the Internet, and that Resources section includes templates for newsletters, for any number of letters they might need to draft to send home, brochures, things of that nature. We keep adding to that, and really it's more of a communications that we continue to try to let our schools know that these resources are available to them and that we're always there to provide input, to look over materials if they would choose to have us look over them.
And the budget for printing, is that a local budget?
The printing, yes, if schools are producing, now if it's a district-wide communication, then it might be within a district, either our department or some other department. But if schools are creating materials, then we're hoping that they'll use the guidelines that we've created for publication, but yes, it would be within whatever budget, whoever was doing the, the, doing the actual piece.
Any other questions?
We can try and pull it up if you'd like, or we could show you after the meeting, the resource.
Let's do it after the meeting, if that's okay. If that's okay.
Mr. Hayes?
I'm delighted here, there's a stipend for web administrators, I think that's a great policy to put in place. I've spoken with teachers and librarians and others in school who have the duty of administering the website. I'm wondering, can you discuss how much the stipend is, or how it's, how we pay it?
Yeah, it varies by tier level, and I don't remember the variations, but let's say it's in the neighborhood of $1,000, one of the, at the high school level. And that's all, you know, keeping a high school website up to date is a lot of work. So it is, I think part of the benefit is the stipend, and part of it is that there is a person who's designated in the school, and everybody knows that's the go-to person. How we pay it?
Source of funds.
Oh, a combination of sources. Some of it comes out of the schools, some of it is district level through Race to the Top.
From a district standpoint, can you talk a little bit about how we, how your office, or maybe a different office, would be reviewing the work of the people who were now, you know, previously it was volunteer to a large extent, and so if there are some errors, maybe that's a little bit forgivable. But now that we're actually paying people a little bit extra, I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we fact-check and proof their work and know, right, kind of what they're doing?
Fact-check is harder. We do have standards in terms of what should be on the website, and it should be current. So if you, you know, if it's in the spring and you still have, and the latest sports schedule you have up is for the fall football schedule, why, that's not current, that wouldn't qualify. So we haven't done our first assessment yet. Fact-checking is hard, though, because I don't necessarily know, nobody in our office would know the particular that, you know, this teacher at XYZ School no longer teaches a particular course. So that is really, has to come more at the, at the school level. And so what we're going to do is do an assessment twice this year, once in the fall, and then once again in the spring, and then it will be paid if, I, yeah, it's a half and half side.
Paid twice a year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other shorter presentation, I think. Good job, Meredith and Olivia, thank you for that. We want to finish up with a little brief presentation on facilities, and let me, let me say that I hope you are as positive as I was at, when you read the consent agenda, when you heard the consent agenda. We approved 11 contracts for constructions and renovations. And Chris, I don't know what the total amount is, I'm sure, I'm sure over $50 million worth of construction, and is represented by those 11 contracts. I'll ask Chris Henson to introduce this next topic, and Ken Murdock, Ken, in the interest of time, you come on up too. But about custodial and also about facilities improvements.
Sure, thank you. And what we would like to do would be to, it's always nice at the beginning of school, particularly when you've had some capital to spend, which we did have some the year before last, where we were able to renovate and add to four of our schools, and then, of course, we opened a new school, Kane Ridge Elementary School. And so we've got a number of pictures that we would like to share with you, and Ken Murdock, who is our Director of Facility Planning and Construction, is going to be making that presentation and providing you some additional information as it relates to not only those projects, but also a couple of others where we have opened a new location for both the academy at Aubrey Mills as well as the academy at Hickory Hollow.
While Ken's bringing that up, I want to make, I want to say a short word of thanks to GCA, our custodial contractor. It was a short summer, and if you think about it, and all the preparation that goes into cleaning floors and everything for our 100, over 145 schools and buildings, they did a great job in getting us ready. We feel like the schools and the ones I've been in certainly have looked very good, and we've fallen within, we think, a very acceptable range of getting ready to start in terms of cleanliness. Ken?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight the results of this year's planning and construction efforts. At the start of school, we opened four completely renovated schools, one totally new school. And as Chris mentioned, we reopened two of the academies, and then we have one other building, our Cone School, that we wanted to share you some of the things that were going on there. And I'm excited to show you some photographs that capture these schools and some of the key components. Although I must admit, I'm a little less excited after the comment made a moment ago that we should target five slides, so I have failed miserably at that. And so we will start, and as we look at our first building, which is the Litten Middle School, and before I walk through it, I'll capture that for all of the renovation projects, we do basically the same thing. So instead of repeating that for each school, I'll just let you know that when we do a complete comprehensive renovation, we take a look at the following, and we're not always able to achieve every piece of it, but we are able to achieve most of it. On the exterior, we look at the roof, the brickwork, the windows, doors, grout. We look at the pavement, the sidewalks, playgrounds, and all the components. On the inside, the big piece is always the building systems, the heating, the air conditioning, the plumbing, the lighting. We look at finishes, new floors, new ceilings, et cetera. We work with our IT group to make sure that the network is up to the state that it should be, and then we look at furniture and fixtures. And then lastly, on all of our projects, as you know, we seek to achieve LEED certification, Silver Status. And that means that our buildings are energy efficient and that they're environmentally sustainable. So those comments apply to all the projects we'll look at tonight. And as we start at Litten, this is the original entrance to the building, built in 1938. It's a complete renovation, and in addition, there were 89,000 square feet in the existing building, we added about 10,000. And the original limestone that's shown here at the entrance, we cleaned it up, there's a mixture of both original 1938 limestone and new limestone in this picture. We restored it, tried to bring them up to match, and we redid all the windows. Noticeably in this picture, you'll see the upstairs library. The next key component was a link, there was an existing school building and then a separate gym, so we connected those two with this link, used the limestone from the main entrance to tie the buildings together. And this link combines not only access to the rest of the, to the gym, but it also contains classrooms, it contains all-new lockers and shower areas for the sports, and it provides storage and other components. Inside, this shows the library, and I'll go through these fairly quickly. We totally upgraded the library, brought in a lot of natural light, all-new furniture and finishes, reading areas, technology areas, et cetera. And if I need to slow, please, please let me know. Inside, and we will show these in each, there's not much to look at in a corridor necessarily, but one thing that happens, when we go in and replace all the floor and all the lights and all the ceiling, it looks very new. So you'll see through all of those, I've captured a corridor shot just because this was a very old and very tired building, and we were able to bring it back to where it's very acceptable for this time. Typical classrooms, again, all-new finishes and systems, typical science lab, computer lab. This is the link, the inside of the link between the two buildings, and it not only connects the buildings, but connects up to the second floor as well, and goes into the gym. And then in the gym, we redid all the finishes, including a total renovation of the hardwood floor. And below this gym, there's space that basically had been abandoned, we restored that space, added classrooms and additional storage. So all of those components there at Litten. Next school is Gateway. Gateway is also a comprehensive renovation, and in addition, the big difference is that we almost doubled the size of Gateway. Originally had 23,000 square feet, and we added 22,000. We maintained much of the original look of the school, including this wrought iron, and it may not show well in this picture, but there's a wrought iron element there that was original to the school, that has built out of wrought iron, a cursive alphabet, multiplication table, and an open book. And that was important to the school, and we recaptured it. We enlarged the library, we added new classrooms. In addition to renovating all classrooms, we added new classrooms, new art rooms, new music rooms. We increased the size of the kitchen and renovated the cafeteria. And these just show, there's my corridor, I like corridors, just show how bright and new the building is. And then we added a PE room to this school. This is the last of all our elementary schools to get a PE room, so they all have them now. And that space was added here as well, and that makes up a lot of the square footage that was added. And this is a shot of the cafeteria. Next is Chadwell, and this shows one of the main things that happened at Chadwell. We redid the entrance, added a canopy, and expanded the cafeteria, which is shown here at the front, which added some height to it as well. So it gives an entirely new look and very welcoming appearance there at Chadwell. We expanded the administration area and created new vestibule. We more than doubled the size of the library, shown here. We again renovated all classrooms, and there are a few new classrooms, so that throughout everything, everything that you see and touch is new, basically. And then this is the cafeteria, we expanded it, we expanded the kitchen as well. You may know, or you may have heard, we had a bit of a rocky opening here. The general contractor for this project went into fall about two months before school was to start. So we worked with Metro Legal and worked quickly with a bonding company to bring in a new general contractor. We were able to maintain most of the subcontractors, and we got the school open on time. There were some things that weren't quite done, and we're finishing those up now, but we were able to get it open and looks great. This is Hermitage. This school has two distinctions. One, it's a two-year-old project, and that is started in the previous school year. And as we look at it, you can see a couple of the components. One is a new entrance, the other to the right is a very new and very large library. The reason this took longer is this was a phased construction. We didn't move the students out, the students stayed the whole time. So we, we brought in a number of portables, moved a group of students out into those portables, then renovated that wing, moved them back in, moved others out. We more than doubled the size of the administration area and added, as I mentioned, this new library, with again, a lot of natural light and a lot of technology as in all of our libraries. And then throughout, we didn't build any new classrooms here other than one new music room, but we renovated every classroom. And this is the cafeteria, which was renovated, and the kitchen as well. And then the PE room was existing here, but we added new lights and a portable stage so it could be, have a multi-purpose. And Kane Ridge is a new, a totally new 91,000 square foot school on about 13 acres. As you look at it both inside and out, you're going to see a lot of use of bright colors. Kids love it, I think most of the teachers love it, although some of them won't admit it, but it's a, it's a very bright and cheerful and exciting new school. Has a two-story entrance that welcomes everyone into the school, and this is that lobby on one side, we're looking toward the library. On the other side, behind the camera, is the administration, a monumental stairwell going up to the second floor. We did a lot of custom color in this building. This is a mural that includes some of the trees, birch trees that are actually on the site, but abstracted with school colors. And you'll see those colors throughout the building. This is the library, and a lot of outside light and interior space. If you look at the purple wall, those windows are the stairwell going upstairs, so as you go up the stairs, you see into the library. And on this end, at the green wall, those windows are a corridor on the second floor. So just a lot of exposure both in and out of the library. This is a community room that's adjacent to the library, that's used for both public functions, special projects, staff meetings, and it's a full-size classroom if we ever need to convert it to a classroom. And then this are just some of the typical classrooms throughout the building. We use a lot of color. In this case, all the classrooms are at a connector that connects four classrooms, and each has a connector color, so it's easy to direct students and parents and visitors, you know, go down to the purple connector and turn right, or the orange connector, or the red or green. So throughout, it brings color, and again, it adds for wayfinding. And I included this shot, just again, color and the quality of finishes. This is just the tile finishes at a typical restroom area. The PE room, very bright, it's been named by the school, the wake-up room. So when you come in here, if you're not, you will be. It includes a stages to most of our PE rooms, and again, is a multi-purpose space. And then we even included the school colors in the playground equipment, so it brings all that to home, and a great sight with a lot of trees in the neighborhood. We lost two of our academy spaces this year. The one at Aubrey Mills course was lost in the flood of 2010. It has recently reopened, it was sponsored by the Simon Youth Foundation, and the Simon Group not only managed the design, lost my thought, managed the design and the construction, but they also paid for all of that through their sponsorship. So they paid for the architect, for So, they paid for the architect, for the contractor, and all the furniture. This building was dedicated August 16th, I think, and serving currently about 65 students.
It was a 15, that's all I remember. The 15.
The 15. I stand corrected. Then a similar thing at the academy of Hickory Hollow. We lost that building because of changes in the mall. We have gone into a temporary space at the Nashville State Community College. You approved tonight the actual architect and construction contracts for the permanent space. But we're, we'll be sharing even the permanent spaces within the Nashville State area. This is their lobby that enters into it. We're identified there, and we're part of their space now, and will continue to be. This is the commons area, and our students are available to use this. Library, again, we have spaces in this area now. And then, these are actual, our classrooms that we're using on a temporary basis. This is an academy class in process here. And then, also, the computer lab that we have there. And the last shot is of the space, of course, this was a mall, the retail space that will be our space. This shows the area of about, I think, 6,500, 6,596 square feet that will be renovated and will become our permanent space, hopefully available in January, and I think will serve about 80 students at that time. And the last slide just kind of brings you up to a date on some of the things that are going on at Con. There've been a lot of programs come in and go out. And basically, the Alternative Learning Center and Adult Learning Center moved to WA Bass. The new Con School is a new program, or the Con School is a new program that we brought into the school. And then, we have there the virtual school functions out of this building, as does Alignment Nashville, the homework hotline, the Con Alumni Association, and also a senior citizens, or senior community center. So, those are the capital construction projects for this school year. Thank you.
Any questions?
Not five slides.
Any questions?
Thanks very much. Appreciate the good work you've done. Next year, we'll, we'll check at least 11 projects in progress, I think, hopefully in progress. That'll be exciting. Okay, thank you very much. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
We do not have a board chair's report tonight, so we will move into announcements. We'll start with Dr. Gentry, Dr. Brannon, Ms. Behring, Ms. Kim, Ms. Shepherd.
September's going to be a very busy month at McGavick High School. Thursday, the 20th, we'll have a full McGavick High School Coalition meeting at 4:00 PM in the Academy Presentation Room. The following day, on the 21st, McGavick High School will host the Annual Wall Bowl. It's a competition between Kane Ridge High School and McGavick High School. The chamber has really gotten involved with this. We are going to have prizes offered by local businesses and individuals. And you can buy your tickets in advance for $5 or $6 at the gate. And we have lovely poster designed by Mr. Linwood Hawkins. He does great work, and it's, he did a beautiful job. So, we're really excited about this event. The next day, Saturday, the 22nd, is Hands on Nashville Day. And of course, they'll be all across Metro Nashville Public Schools, but there'll be several events going on in the McGavick Cluster. And one last thing, I would like to give a huge thank you for the monetary donation that the Donaldson Gateway Project gave for improvements outside of Two Rivers Middle School. And I know I won't mention everybody who spearheaded this project, but two individuals in particular, Frank True and Jeff Syracuse, were really instrumental in getting this help done and getting this monetary donation made. So, the new principal there, Dr. Dunaway, is very excited about this going on. So, I just want to thank them and remind everybody to come out to the Wall Bowl on 21st. Thank you.
Mr. Plankston?
Yes, three, three quick things. Even though the new members of this board had to go through our baptism of fire a little early tonight, I'd just like to say to all the members of this board, I really am proud to be part of this and look forward to working with all of you in the years ahead. Look forward to learning from you who have been here already. The second thing is, I'd like to congratulate Judd Haney, who's the principal of Wright Middle School in my district, for being one of the first principals selected to participate in Dr. Register's great experiment to extend more autonomy to our school leaders. Over the summer, I visited the schools in my district to try to understand their issues. I walked away from my conversation with Judd, really impressed with what's happening at Wright. And I think the fact that Wright Middle has earned Dr. Register's confidence says something about where that school is headed, and I look forward to hearing more about this, this great experiment as it unfolds. And the last, lastly, I'd like to thank the Islamic Center of Tennessee for asking me to join their Habitat for Humanity Unity Build this past weekend, along with the congregants from Woodmont Family, Woodmont Hills Family of God, and the West End Synagogue. We spent Sunday helping put the finishing touches on a new LEED-certified home in Southeast Nashville's Edison Park neighborhood. And I just, I think at a time when this country continues its healing from the events of 11 years ago, it was a nice, it was nice to be a part of a multi-denominational effort to give a well-deserving family a well-built, affordable home. For anybody who's never done a Habitat project, I highly recommend it. I'm still sore, but it was a lot of fun. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hayes?
I have no announcements, but I'd love to just take a moment, personal privilege, and congratulate you on your nomination as Chair and Vice Chair. I'm excited to work with, with both of you. I know a lot about, well, I hope I know a little bit about your, your passion, and you know, I compliment you for the work you've done around disadvantaged youth and safety. And thank you, you guys have started a great tradition the last couple of years, and I hope in your role as Chair and Vice Chair, that you can continue to have influence within our community to continue to raise awareness around that very important issue. So, I just wanted to say congratulations, and also thank you for accepting such a massive responsibility.
I don't think I'm really sure what I've accepted, but thank you. Ms. Frock, any announcements?
I have just a few. At the September 25th work session, we'll be announcing committee appointments. A document with all the committees will be forwarded to each board member by tomorrow morning. So, if you would, forward your selections or your desires to the board administrator by September 21st, so we can get that information out to everyone. Also, for, especially for our new board members, a full pack meeting will be Thursday, September 20th. If you are able to attend, it will be at the Martin Center at 6:00 PM. If you're able to attend, it would be a really great opportunity for you to not only see what's going on with that committee, but also meet a lot of the parents that are a part of that committee. It's a, it's a really, it's a really good way of getting to know these, these parents. Also, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, we will dedicate the new Kane Ridge Elementary School. You saw the slides, and the slides do not do that school justice. It is absolutely beautiful. You have to see it in person to really appreciate it. So, anyone who can come out, please do so. It is tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. Also, wanted to remind board members about our board retreat coming up on Thursday morning. It will be from 8 till 5. Again, on Friday, from 8 till noon. So, we really do appreciate you clearing your schedules for that. And please make sure that you are there and on time and ready to rock, roll, and learn. That concludes my announcements. Ms. Frock?
There being no further business, I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.